All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. It is 4:02 PM. And if we could start with a pledge of allegiance from Police Sergeant Mendez.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I'll go to our city clerk for roll call. Here. All right, item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Lambert? Sorry, you guys are faster than my microphone buttons here. All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, agenda is approved. Okay, so item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items, and no action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chambers information table. At this time, I would like to invite any members of the public to come forward and speak, and just remind those in the council chambers to either turn their cellphones off or set it to silent. Do we have anyone in the public forum tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Ann McCauley. I've been here, been a resident for almost 26 years. I wanted to speak about an item that's going to be in your closed session and has been in past meetings regarding the city manager. I don't know if it was ever a five-to-zero requirement before for city managers, but whether it was or not, it's a dereliction of duty if you don't change this to five-to-zero. I think it needs to be more, that's a position that is more than just a sweet sweeper, and there's nothing wrong with street sweepers, but I'm saying there's a difference between one who's a CEO and one who is lower in the food chain, although all the jobs are important. I think unless this particular item to remove a city manager is changed to five-to-zero, I would consider this a dereliction of duty. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the public forum?
My name is Mark Fay. I've lived in Los Banos for 36 years, and I live in the Racquet Club development. What I'd like to speak about today is the proposed development of 14 duplexes just off of Racquet Club Drive. And then also, I'd like to speak about San Luis Drive. So I believe the duplex development will be coming up for consideration for approval soon to the city council, and when that happens, I would, I would hope the council will consider a few points before approving. One, that a requirement be put in place to maintain the property behind the cinder block walls, which are now in place in half of the development, in a manner that is landscaped and kept clear of all garbage at all times. I do want to make it clear, when I say behind the cinder block walls, I mean from, from the side that Racquet Club Drive and San Luis Drive are on. That's approximately 20 feet. There's approximately 20 feet from the wall to the sidewalk, and right now, and for years, there's nothing on that space other than weeds and garbage. The weeds, at times getting so tall, it impedes a driver's view when coming off of Racquet Club Drive onto San Luis Drive. And then also, a cinder block wall in that development that be kept to one color. I understand that defacing and tagging happens, but they painted that wall about a year ago, kind of a beige. It got tagged, and they painted it green, the tagging part. So now it's two colors, and it looks bad. So number two, the road condition on San Luis Drive, and that is in terrible condition. I would like to point out that there's been a great deal of things that have been developed in that road, developed on that road or near that road, which requires you to travel on it. To name a few, Los Banos Junior High School, Merced County Child Development, Pacheco High School, Grasslands Elementary School, a memory care facility, and hundreds, if not thousands, of houses. And all through this, San Luis Drive has never been repaired. I would beg to differ that San Luis Drive is the worst-conditioned road in the city of Los Banos. I've spoken to four or five people associated with the city, and I've been told four or five different things, three of which I'll tell you. One is, the road is scheduled for repair as soon as possible. Two is that it's scheduled for repair in the summer of 2023, and I think the most reliable thing I was told is it's not on any list to be repaired. So, so I would say, before you approve 14 duplexes, which equal 28 dwellings, which in turn will equal at least 28 more vehicles traveling on a road, which is in, which is in shambles, and if you've driven on it, if you folks have driven on it, it's dangerous for your car, literally. Not to mention, it's embarrassing for the city of Los Banos to have a road in that condition. I understand that the schools that I mentioned that have been developed out there, the city doesn't have much they can do about the development of them, and which, they're fine to be developed. I have no problem with the schools being there, and I get it that the city can't require the schools or the state to, to repair the, to repair the road, but, but when they're, when you guys are in your meetings or whatever you're doing to decide where your funds are going to be, are going to be spent, I've seen roads all over Los Banos that are complete tearouts and replacing, which that road needs. San Luis needs to be at the top of the list, and, I mean, it could be a little caveat to those of us that live in that area that have had all those things come in, you know, we didn't necessarily bargain for those when we moved there, and as I said, no problem with the schools, love them.
That, that's our time, sir, I'm sorry.
And so, yeah, I would just recommend that you would fix San Luis Road first before you approve the 14 duplexes. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt your special meeting, but I mentioned it on the second, second Wednesday in the month.
All right, thank you. All right, any, anyone else in the public forum? All right, I'll turn to our city clerk. Do we have any write-in? No comments, okay. All right, at this time, we're going to go to item six, conduct interviews for the city treasurer vacancy and make a selection to fill the vacancy for this. We're going to go to our interim city manager, Suzellems.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So back on December 7th, the city council directed staff to fill the city treasurer vacancy by appointment. The person that would be appointed to fill this vacancy would hold office until the next general municipal election, which is going to be held November of 2024. It's governed by the California Government Code, and the city's finance department staff would handle all of the tasks required in the California Government Code with the oversight of the appointed city treasurer. So I do want to note that our interim finance director is watching this meeting remotely, and that the proceedings for the interview and the voting process today are outlined in the staff report, but I will go through them quickly. So each applicant will be interviewed separately. The order of the interviews will be determined by lot. The city clerk will draw names randomly. Each of the applicants will be given the opportunity to introduce themselves and to address the city council concerning his or her qualifications, and then to answer the same questions that have been provided ahead of time. Each applicant will then be given 15 minutes to complete their interview, and each council member will then have one vote per applicant, so to vote for one applicant. The applicant then that receives the majority votes will be selected to fill the vacancy by a resolution of the city council. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Will our, will the candidates remain in the room while we're doing this, or how do you?
Yes.
Okay. That's my only question. Anyone else have any other questions? No? Okay. I think we're all ready to get started. Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely good with it, yeah.
Everybody else is okay? No, it's just by the consensus of the council.
All right. All right. Yep.
Then we can move forward?
Yes.
So let's start with then the city clerk, if she can start the process of the random selection, and then we'll start the interview process. Roy Todd.
All right, Mr. Todd.
Okay.
We, we have some, some questions here. They're going to start with me, so I'll give you, if you want to take some time and get your stuff situated. All right, so we're going to start with an opening statement from you, sir?
Okay, great. First of all, I want to thank everybody for all their work that they do for the city, and part of my motivation for being here is to try to be someone on, basically on your depth chart to, to help out and make things better for Los Banos. So that's really my, my true motivation for doing it. It looked like Los Banos was in need of some help, and so I thought that would be a good idea for me to move forward with the, with the process. I've, I've never really been at a televised interview before, nor have I had any of the people that I'm, a fellow candidate for, be witnessing my interview. So all this is a first for me, but I'll, I'll persevere, I'm sure. Let's see, what, I think one of the things I bring to the table is a depth of experience when it comes to planning, forecasting, and those sorts of things. They might not necessarily be directly financial statement-driven, but they, but they all are indirectly related to it, and all of, all of the things that I've had in my past had to do, believe it or not, all came down to money management for the company, and you can't, you can't well be in charge of production and planning and procurement and not understand how you could possibly really tap cash flow for a particular organization, right? So there's a lot of it that goes into it, you got to make sure you have the cash on hand in order to operate. Suppliers don't tend to support you very well when you don't pay them, so. What else can I, what else can I answer for you, Mayor? Okay. Okay. All right, the other part of it is that I, that I have spent a lot of different things and, you know, invested in my education and so forth, and that wasn't just going to, to school right out of high school or any of those things. All along the way, I was working toward continuously improving myself by investing in my, my education, whether it be through seminars or getting my MBA, any of those kinds of things, plus also just trying to meet up with subject matter experts, go out and look at best, best practices for anything I'm involved with, and then turn around and take what I've learned from the people that are doing it the best and brightest way, and then applying it to my own organization. So sometimes it's not so bad to, to imitate, not necessarily just to have to create something from scratch, so. So just a quick rundown, I, my bachelor's degree, which I graduated in within three years before I was 21, is from Pepperdine University in Malibu. I can only imagine what they're going through right now with their weather. That was in business administration. My, later on, I started about seven years later, when I had a young family as well, and at night I took classes at Cal Lutheran University in Thousand Oaks and got my MBA. I was at, one of the divisions I worked for was United Technologies, which is a huge company. They own Otis Elevator, all kinds of aerospace organizations, things like that. And one of the, one of the things that I was tasked with was to be the business, business practices officer for, for our branch, for our division. And so basically, that kind of came down to being the ethics officer for the organization. So obviously, I strongly believe in that, and I, and I put a special program in place for all of our employees to make sure that, to remind them how important it was to do the right thing, that sort of thing. I have a CPM, which is a certified purchasing manager from the Institute of Supply Management. I've done a few things with, with the local, I'll call it just organizations and so forth. So Los Banos Rotary was one thing that I've been involved with in my past, and I was sergeant arms and treasurer there, and I'm currently, I was lucky enough, or maybe I did enough right things, that they awarded me a Paul Harris Fellow designation, which, that just kind of came down to hard work during the COVID time and putting various, what would you call it? It was kind of like Zoom meetings in place rather than since we couldn't meet him, because I was concerned that possibly the, the group would have trouble when they couldn't, you know, meet, obviously. So, so that was done, and I did the same thing for the Chamber of Commerce. That's, that's about it for.
All right. So you, we're going to ask you roughly 10 questions here, two from each of the council members, and they're a total of 15 minutes correct to answer all of the questions. Just kind of think of, you know, the time management of that.
All right.
So I'm going to go ahead and start here, and you really kind of just did it in your introduction, but please take a moment to introduce yourself and speak to your qualifications for city treasurer.
All right. Yeah, at the, at the, at the risk of being redundant, I think all of the, what I said previously kind of, kind of speaks to that. I have, I have, also I have two daughters that are, that are obviously, obviously adults, and they're both schoolteachers in the Simi Valley School District, so. And I have a brother in law enforcement, he's a retired CHP, so I have a lot of those kind of, what would I call it, a little bit of what I'd know about government employees and things like that, probably much comes from them, so.
And then, second question is, why are you interested in serving as our city treasurer?
Well, I thought, you know, I've, I've done very well since I've moved here to Los Banos, and I just felt like it was a good thing for me to possibly get involved in some way or another, that where I could have helped things along, because it sounded like there was, there was a need, and I just wanted to fill in, fill the need.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Begonian?
Mr. Todd, please outline your experience with interest rate and credit risk management as it applies to government.
Well, as far as the government sector is, is concerned, I can, I can tell you that I really don't have any experience along, along the way. Really, my experience along, some of that would come from, you know, I have with my business, I have retirement plans with my employees, and so I've had to, you know, manage that to some degree in addition to everything else, because you're kind of like jackup, when you're employed with, for yourself, you're kind of like a jack of all trades, and you try to be a master at all, but some things are, you know, more in your wheelhouse and others aren't, right?
All right, thank you. And can you elaborate on the current municipal investment landscape?
One, one thing I, one thing I discovered was, I believe it was back in July, the League of California Cities announced what their acronym was called CLASS, and so that was a California Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System. So essentially, what I, what I've pulled from that was, you're going to have things, you're going to have a, a pool of money within the, within the city where you're looking at like a short-term investment, and then other things where it might be from maybe like some of your reserves, you might want to have something that you could wait a little longer, so it just would come down to how liquid they are. So that's, that's kind of what I got as far as anything that was really a, what would I say, like a recent kind of development? If July is recent, then that's, that's the best one that I could, that I could find. I, I under, you know, I understand the, you know, the basis of it and why, why they would do it that way, so.
Hello, Mr. Todd.
Do you have experience with fund accounting as it pertains to pooled cash? If so, please elaborate.
The, the direct answer is no, unfortunately. Again, for the most part, I, I believe that, you know, I understand the concept, but as far as experience is concerned, that would, I would have to say no, especially in a, in a government setting, so.
All right.
I've always had to divide up assets of the company and sit down and have these kind of meetings with, with all the other managers of the various disciplines within an organization, but, and we made decisions based on that, but that kind of had more to do with, again, kind of like cash flow and, and, and funding our company in order to succeed, so. kind of like cash flow and 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 funding our company in order to succeed, so.
All right. Can you give an example of a governing policy that would apply to the City Treasurer role?
I think I think the role basically is assuring that the investment of monies to the fullest extent and consistent and safe liquidity is kind of speaks to that. It's that's basically in the mission statement of the treasurer position. And I think with my my planning background that that I understand the concepts, and I can ask the critical questions if needed. And I'm more of a hands-on guy than a ivory tower guy, so I if I need to figure something out, I'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Todd. Do you have any experience managing a budget? If so, please explain.
Okay, well, I've had I've had budget experience basically for, I hate to admit it out loud, but probably 40 some years, based on being involved with leadership positions at various companies. My budget experience has more to do with annual budgets that we would develop, let's say, like in November, December kind of thing, or like the last two months of a fiscal quarter working forward. I also have experience with forecasting, which if you've ever worked in any kind of size of company, the sales guys are supposed to give you a forecast, and they're not they're usually more guys that like shake hands and and they're not really deep thinkers sometimes when it comes to giving you like a solid forecast. So you have to try to pull these kind of things out of those folks in order to make make good decisions. And but to that point, I have done, well, not forecasting, but planning in that way. The other side of it is a little bit so with the different kinds of community groups that I that I'm associated with. Rotary, I did about three years as a treasurer, and and then I've just been a general member of of the Board of Directors of the chamber, so I have, we'd talk about budgets at that point. And of course, those are those are much smaller things than I ever had to deal with in my in my working life or my or my entrepreneurial life.
Have you ever presented a financial report to a governing body?
Well, only if the governing body is the management within the different divisions, or if I had to go up levels within something like a UTC, which is like a Fortune 40 company, and had to turn around and present, you know, findings and strategies and so forth like that. So I have experienced that way, but again, it's not it's not government.
Good evening, Mr. Todd. Your next question is, have you received and understood the city's investment policy? If so, please elaborate.
I would say that I have in the sense that I I could find the mission statement. I, as far as some of the other things, I know that there's various sections within that that I could speak to if I I could. Basically, it talks about receiving and safely keeping monies that that come the city's way, you know, basics like that. I understand all the checks and balances that are typically required within a within a private organization or a or a private sector company. We always have different things. One of the examples would be something like, okay, you have a purchasing, make a purchase. You have the receiving department receive the goods. So you have the bill of lading, signs, yeah, we got it, we count everything, there's a total accountability there. And so then you have, so it's just basically those kinds of things. All those checks and balances are put in place. You know, only pay out on on warrants assigned to legally designated persons, same same kind of thing. There's that's just basic business fundamentals. Once a month, provide reports and so forth. The only thing the only thing I found unfortunately was when I went on, when I looked online, the only report I found from the treasurer was from 2020. So I don't know what the problem was there. It could just be something with the with the website, I don't know. But I can tell you that if if I was the treasurer, I would I would have everything up to date when it's when it's due.
Thank you. And your last question is, how would you communicate complex financial information in the treasurer's report to the city council and ensure it is understood?
One thing I'd like to say is basically my personal standard operating procedure is to first to seek to understand what's going on and what what the expectations are, right? And then from there, I'd go out and and determine what's the best way to answer those, you know, those needs or those expectations. In my mind, as a as the treasurer and and working with this body, you folks would be my customers, and I have to make sure that my customers are happy. Also, the folks that might need some kind of guidance from me within the city and also the citizens might want to know some things, and I and I know that they all have their own expectations. And I would never try to overstep my my bounds, but and I'd make sure that I was right before I went ahead, kind of quote Will Rogers, but I would, that's the way that I that I go about doing things, just try to understand what the customer needs are, and then go back and get the information that's being asked for. And and if I have to, hopefully, I don't have to circle back and come back with the, you know, ask for a little bit more time to get an answer, but I will get the right answer, I will figure out a way to best express it. A lot of times, the way I do things is I I kind of kind of turn it a little bit into like a parable or break it down into something that's a little bit more commonplace amongst the way that we live our lives, and then I kind of apply it to that situation and just kind of and then just kind of scale it based on how what that looks like, right? So.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes the the interview portion.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right. And we were drawing just. Yeah. Okay. All right.
Got to put these on. Good afternoon.
And feel free to just, there you go.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Yanis, and council for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself to you and answer any questions regarding my abilities to serve as a City Treasurer. I'm not sure if you want me to go into my spiel here, or if you want to wait till you ask the question.
Same thing. We're going to give you an opportunity to give an opening statement, and then when you're done, we're going to go into, you'll have 15 minutes to answer the the 10 questions, and council will each give you two questions.
Again, my name is Lucy Lawrence. I'm married to my husband Joe. I've had three grown children, six grandchildren. My I attended, I've lived all my life here in Los Banos. I attended all the schools here. My children attended all the schools, and I even had some of my grandchildren attend before they moved out of California. I'm currently the VP Branch Manager for Mechanics Bank here in Los Banos and for the past three years. Prior to this, I was with Rabo Bank for 12 years and actually started that office here in Los Banos as a de novo office, had to get the community aware of a bank that had they had never heard of, starting with zero customers, zero deposits, zero loans, and to the point where we're at today. So it's something I'm very proud of for accomplishing that. Prior to that, I was with County Bank for 18 years and until they closed their doors. My experience in finance, it has to do with banking, pretty much, so I have never worked for government entity, although I deal with customers who are municipalities or public funds, public entities. But to the extent that I'm working within their inside realm of finances, I have not done that. I'll wait for you to finish my introduction when you ask your question.
Okay, all right. So I'm so I'm going to ask you the same question. Please just take a moment to introduce yourself and speak to your qualifications for City Treasurer.
Okay. So I've introduced myself personally. My banking career actually began 43 years ago, where I started with Bank of America as a proof operator, a full-time proof operator. Prior to that, I was in high school and actually worked as an ROP student here for the City of Los Banos under Tessie Mazina, who was the city clerk at that time. She was a tough lady to work with, but she was my mentor and made sure everything was, you know, all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, and she was very much a stickler for to be on top of things and be on time and be well dressed and well groomed, and she was old school. And the biggest excitement working for the City of Los Banos at that time, just as an ROP student, was picking up the red phone when it rang and, you know, maybe hitting that red button at 12 o'clock so that everybody, I don't know how it's done now, but back then it was all old school. I'm not sure that I have the qualifications technically to be the City Treasurer, as there really was no job description given with the application, but I'm a firm believer that anyone can be trained or taught and to learn something new. Given the questions I received today earlier, I will try to apply the answers to my best ability and hopefully, you know, we can go from there. I've always wanted to participate in some way with the city council or committees over the years. Life seems to dictate what you can do and not do. In the beginning, my children, their activities, sports, et cetera, came first, and in addition to working full time, just kind of kept my time unable to participate. Then my job was a big part of that, especially with Rabo Bank coming in and having to start up the new office. That took away my time. Now I find myself a little more settled, and while I am still busy and working full time, I feel I can commit to this position since it is a part-time, and hopefully, this gives me an opportunity to serve my community in a different capacity. I love living in Los Banos. I didn't have a choice when I was a baby, but as an adult, I chose to stay here and raise my family. And while there may be challenges in the city, like all small cities have, I can't imagine living anywhere else.
All right, thank you. And my second question is, why are you interested in serving as City Treasurer, which you may have just answered?
Which just, yeah.
They gave you the opportunity anyway.
That's okay. Oh, other than to elaborate on that, other than that, I just love the town that I live in, and I am proud of to the point where it's gotten and would like to help in any way that I can, if if possible.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Ms. Lawrence.
Hi.
Can you please outline your experience with interest rate and credit risk management as it applies to government?
So since I have not worked for a government entity or municipality, my experience is minimal, probably to zero. With banking, I deal with the interest rate environment and credit risk management, probably in a different way than municipalities do. The city being a municipality, the fiduciary responsibilities and risk appetite are most likely different than my current job in banking. I will say that I deal with public funds, as I specified earlier, to the certain degree that when opening the accounts, and I've been doing that for years, we become, we have experts in the bank that deal specifically with the public entities regarding any financing or deposit needs of our customers if questions arise more than what I can assist them with within the office. You have a finance department that employs a full-time employee, they probably get the big bucks, and know all of this, and fully up to the task of knowing what is needed, I'm sure, for the city, or at least I hope so. So I apologize, but I'm not able to elaborate further on that particular landscape of the city without being briefed with more information.
All righty. And can you elaborate on the current municipal investment landscape?
I cannot. Hi.
Do you have experience with fund accounting, counting as it pertains to pooled cash? If so, please elaborate.
So are you talking about pooled cash or pooled funds? There's two different things.
I'm going to defer to Stacey or inter.
Specifically pooled cash. Pooled cash, okay. Well, I know just a little bit about both, and not because I ever dealt with it too much, but not enough to elaborate on the city finances.
All right. Can you give an example of a governing policy that would apply to the City Treasurer role?
Because Los Banos uses the City Treasurer in a different capacity than certain larger cities, that I'm not I'm not able to give you that answer, because number one, I don't know what the City Treasurer exactly does. I'm probably pretty stupid for applying for this position without knowing what I'm getting myself into, but normally, City Treasurers are full-time positions. They make six-digit figures, and they are in charge of providing treasury services for all city departments. They usually manage the city's debt portfolio, short-term cash investment portfolio. You have a finance department that does this, so without having a job description for what the City of Los Banos wants with their part-time treasurer position, I I don't believe that I can answer that question efficiently without really knowing what it is that you're expecting.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Lewis. Do you have any experience managing a budget? If so, please explain.
The experience I have is to keep within given budget that the bank gives me. For example, I don't create the budget, it's given to me, and then I have to maintain it. Obviously, I run my office like it's my business, so, you know, deep attention is done to what's being done in my office and and our expenditures and so I keep within the budget that way. My budget at home, for example, which if you ask my husband, he'd tell you I'm not very good with, because I overspend probably, but when it comes to work and when you're handling someone else's affairs, you need to, you know, have that fiduciary responsibility. And so budget-wise, that that would be the extent of my experience.
Have you ever presented a financial report to a governing body?
Not within, for example, like government, like the city or a government entity. When I was treasurer for the different organizations, nonprofit groups that we that I have participated in, I would prepare, you know, the financial reports. But again, that's on a small level for the nonprofits, the local nonprofits. That's the extent that I've prepared anything to any particular body of government, but not officially a like a city or.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Lawrence.
Hi.
The next question is, have you received and understood the city's investment policy? And if so, please elaborate.
I have not. Given the short time that I received this information, I tried to go online to see if there was something, just so I could be prepared. I could not find anything on the website that was substantial in what you were just asking. If there is, maybe I didn't find it, maybe it's under something of that, something else that I didn't look for, but I didn't see anything that was there for public viewing that could give that answer correctly.
Okay, thank you. And the last question is, have, how would you communicate complex financial information in the treasurer's report to the city council and ensure it's understood?
Well, without understanding or reviewing what is currently done, I don't feel like I can answer that, except to say that I am somebody who is very straightforward. I pay attention to details, and after getting the feel for what is expected and what is needed, I would be in a better position to answer this with more certainty, and I've usually never had any problem. usually never had any problem explaining something to somebody to not make it clear. I usually go above and beyond explanations. I've been told I'm too wordy. So that's to the extent of it.
Thank you.
All right. That, that concludes this, this interview portion. Thank you. All right. So now we... Councilmember Jones?
It seems like there wasn't a lot of details regarding the role of the city treasurer position. I was going to see if we can share what the duties are and the expectations and everything along with it before, just to make sure these two candidates, they want to go forward with it, because it seems like there's not enough information out there on it.
I can help answer that, Councilmember Jones. So the role of the city treasurer is really an oversight for the finance department. But it would, all of the financials, all of the investments, all of the reporting would be done with the finance department. So it's just an oversight. Whoever is selected would be educated and brought up to speed by the interim finance director. So they would be taught what to do, what to be expected. But it really is just that oversight to be able to ensure that the city is meeting its government requirements. Those duties that are required by the government code are listed in the staff report, but it is, you know, receive and safely keep money. It's, it's very basic. Really, all of those functions are dealt with in the finance department, and this person would just be an oversight to ensure that those steps are being followed. But they would be with the interim finance director specifically, the day-to-day operations, those investments. All of those reports would be handled by the finance department.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, thank you. I, I think maybe you covered that, because the last question I asked both candidates was, have you, I'm sorry, the first question was, have you reviewed and understand the city investment policy? So was that information in general given to them so that they could at least read it and have some understanding?
It was a policy that was just recently revised. Interim Finance Director Brent Kuhn did recently revise that, I would say, probably within the last three months or so. But that is something that he would go over personally with whoever is appointed, so that they can understand the investment policy, where those limits are, and what the council has approved on, on how that policy is to be, to be conducted. So it would, it would take a bit of educating to get that person who was appointed. But definitely with education and over, help with the interim finance director, it's definitely doable with either one of the candidates.
And just my opinion, I, I think the way some of these questions are phrased, it, it would probably be better ask of someone who's already been in that position, rather than somebody who's applying for the position, without us giving them enough information to either garner out in the public or find on the website or come in and, and be able to obtain. Because if, if a candidate hasn't received something in order to answer questions such as our investment policy, that wouldn't have been a question that I want, would want to ask them. I, I think it would be unfair. So, you know, we, we have to go forward today. But I think moving forward, we need to be mindful of asking questions that a candidate can at least give their experience in their job and in their life, rather than specific to the job. And, and, you know, we're preparing, you know, we, we are going to be in a position of preparing them and educating them once they get that job. But these questions, in my opinion, don't give them that opportunity to really talk about their own experience and their jobs and what they do. I think both of them have elaborated the best they can based on what we've given them here. But these are really detailed more to the job without them knowing what the job entails. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and, and, and I agree too, that I, I think, you know, if we're expected to fill a position and, and someone's applying for the position, the more, the more expectations we can give to them ahead of time and say, hey, this is, this is what you're walking into. And then, you know, give them time to prepare better. I, I think we can do that. So, Councilmember Jones, do you have something?
Unless you guys just want to review what the compensation and anything else that goes along with that role.
Lucy, I don't know if you can give, other than the statement, a little bit more detail on the statement.
If it's just like the city council is offered, we're, except they'll be given $100 a month, and they'll be offered vision, dental, health, life insurance.
All right. Okay, so the next phase or next step?
If you'd like to take a recess, you can to think about it. Otherwise, you can call for a vote and can do a roll call vote to see. Each council member will be able to vote for one candidate.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to put it out there. Do, do we want to take a quick recess? Or do we want to, I'm, I'm just going to, going to get the, the feel up here. Okay, I'm, I'm good with if we just want to do a vote and, and get right to it. Okay. So we'll, we'll move forward with that. And then we'll start, yes, please.
Pardon me? Yes. Who would you like to vote for?
So I, I, I like both of their, both of their interviews, or both of their statements. I like the honesty of Ms. Lawrence. I'm gonna go off with the background and the, and the field that it's in, and I'm going to go with Ms. Lawrence.
Okay. Councilmember Begonia?
I'm going to go with Ms. Lawrence as well.
Councilmember Jones?
I think we're fortunate to have two great community members with vast backgrounds on this. And whoever we choose, I think the city's really lucky here. However, I am going to go with Ms. Lawrence.
I'm Councilmember Lewis. I'm going to go with Mr. Todd.
I'm Mayor Yanis.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that, that we have two outstanding candidates for the position. I really wish we could have had more, I guess, homework to give you regarding, you know, what, what you're walking into. I think you're both doing it for the right reason. My decision is just, you know, based on, on the fact that Mrs. Lawrence has the banking background to work with our, our finance department. And so I'm going to go with Mrs. Lawrence. Okay. Okay. So item 6A would be City Council Resolution Number 6603, approving an appointee to fill the vacancy in the Office of City Treasurer. Does anyone want to make a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Oh, sure. Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve applicant Lucy Lawrence to fill the vacancy of the city treasurer position.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. All righty.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In the resolution, it states that this will take effect immediately after its passage. So I just wanted to make note that she's the new city treasurer as of right now.
Okay, so.
Right, right, right. But she won't be at the meeting on the 18th. So we may need to do something different.
Okay. Make arrangements.
Okay.
All right. And again, thank you. Thank you for, for applying and, and congratulations. All right. Okay, and then moving on to item 7, which is the closed session. 7A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9B, one potential case. Item 7B, public employment, city manager recruitment pursuant to government code section 54957. And then item C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9B, one potential case. And we will report back after closed session. All right, we are back from closed session. Regarding item 7A, there's no reportable action direction has been given to staff. Regarding item 7B, there's no reportable action direction that has been given to staff. And item C, by a vote of five to zero, five yeas, the city council has approved the tolling agreement with the Central California Irrigation District and has authorized the mayor to execute that. At this time, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting. Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
I second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and the meeting is adjourned.